We'll start with A2. Approval of long-term agreement with the Culver City Historical Society for its use of the multipurpose room in the Veterans Memorial Building. Do you have a report, please, Mr. Lepointe?
Yes, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. As I begin, I want to clarify that the staff report mentioned the multipurpose room is the room under consideration to be leased on a long-term basis to the Culver Historic Society. Actually, it's the overflow room at the multipurpose room that we are speaking about tonight, and not the multipurpose room. On June 22, 2006, the city received a request from the Culver City Historical Society requesting that the city of Culver City work with the Culver City Historical Society in considering if there might be any space available in the city facility where the history of Culver City could be archived, worked on, visited, and displayed. The elements of that the Historical Society identified as necessary for a prime location were, one, a safe and secure environment, two, local access, three, electricity/internet access to be paid by the Historical Society, four, work office space for cataloging, researching, scanning, and five, storage space. In return, the letter stated that the city would benefit from, among other things, the development of historic resources in one place, a cost savings to the city in cataloging and preserving important city records, economic development, continuing displays for special events, orientation programs for the city and/or visiting dignitaries, the continuing development of tours and docent training. The overflow room in the Veterans Memorial Building was seen to fulfill all of the location characteristics listed by the Historical Society. It is approximately 1,523 square feet in size and has recently been used infrequently as overflow space to the multipurpose room. An agreement such as this for an historic museum for Culver City would make better and more consistent use of the space than is now occurring. Also, locating the Historical Society in a city facility would be in concert with goals one, two, and four of the city's executive summary and program goals of the adopted community cultural plan, as well as the general strategy of Parks Recreation and Community Services Department of developing various attractions in and around its different facilities, which would in turn create more varied public interest and use. The standard city agreement would be used, the standard city agreement would be used and the terms would be the following: an initial five-year term that would automatically renew in one-year term increments thereafter, a rental fee of a dollar per year to be paid to the city, that the Historical Society would pay for telephone installation, internet access, and utilities, the ability of the Historical Society to make access and security improvements to the room at their own cost and then only after plans have been approved by the city and complying with any and all California building and fire codes and Culver City municipal code amendments and resolutions to the California construction codes, and that the Historical Society would reimburse the city for any city staff costs it might incur if the Historical Society requests the opening of the facility outside of the building's normal hours. Staff is requesting that the city council direct the city attorney to prepare the necessary documents and authorize the city manager to approve the documents or discuss the item and provide further direction to staff. I'm available for questions or comments.
Thank you very much. We'll have, Mr. Remantik, do you call the speakers first, and then after that, we'll read the cards.
First speaker is Anita Shapiro.
It'll be three minutes per speaker. Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, council members. My name is Anita Shapiro, and I'm a resident of Culver City. The Culver City Historical Society is part of the city, and we serve the whole city. We want to catalog and label and preserve all historical documents here in the city. This is an ideal spot with easy access for citizens who want to join us, preserve history, or learn about our, or learn about our history. Being a Parks and Rec commissioner, I would love to have the Historical Society in this space. Please vote to enter into this lease, a good partnership for our city and its citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Ephraim Vielen. Good evening, Mayor Silbiger, Vice Mayor Corlin, and members of the city council. I've been asked to read a letter that's addressed to the mayor, and I want you to know that I concur with the things that I will be reading from this letter, and then I would like to hand it to the clerk for it to be entered into the record, to become a part of the record. September 23, 2006, Mayor Gary Silbiger and members of the city council, I regret that I could not be here this evening for the vote on the proposed move by the Culver City Historical Society from Bank of the West to Veterans Memorial Building. I'm a Culver City resident since 1986, whose family moved to the West Los Angeles region in 1919. I'm a member of the Screen Actors Guild, the International Documentary Association, the West Los Angeles Chamber of Commerce, the Los Angeles Press Club, and the Culver City Lions. I served as second vice president of the Culver Historical Society in charge of the museum, and also as first vice president in charge of programs. I resigned my position as first vice president in 2004 in protest of the move from the West Los Angeles College. The move was ill-timed, poorly planned, and very sloppily executed. In recent months, I've been asked about the archives that former head of Human Services Sid Cronenthal left in the care of the Culver City Historical Society. They were moved from the Human Services offices to the Historical Society Museum office at West Los Angeles College. These are not Sid Cronenthal's personal property; they are the property of the city of Culver City, scrapbooks containing more than 30 years of history of the Human Services Department. The last time I was at the Historical Society office at West Los Angeles College, I was with Mr. Mark Wannamaker, who was then the museum chair. We brought, we brought in acid-free boxes to facilitate a move to what we thought would be another building at West. I turned the key over to President Steve Rose because Julie Lugo-Sara wanted to research some documents for her book. I never received the key back and never visited the site again. In recent months, I've been asked about scrapbooks and other memorabilia donated by Mr. Cronenthal, by Judy Stangler, and the current head of Human Services. No one seems to know where they are, or if they are even still with the society. I was informed by two eyewitnesses that the collection is a mess, quote, unquote. I was informed by two eyewitnesses, okay, I have been informed by two sources that the only person who has access to the room where the Historical Society memorabilia is housed is Councilman Steve Rose. I support the society's move from the Bank of the West to Vets Auditorium. However, the society should furnish an itemized account of all items at the Bank of the West under Councilman Rose's care to the city manager. If anyone is interested, I have a videotape of the room at West Los Angeles College as we left it, and eyewitness accounts from people who saw the items there, including film historian Mark Wannamaker, photographer, and archivist Rodney Gottlieb, and architect Stan Abrams, who, all who felt that it should not have been moved from West. Sincerely, Ross Hawkins, former museum chair, former first vice president. And in conclusion, I want to thank you for allowing me the extra time. A former speaker did not take the full time, and I appreciate these few moments. I attempted to go and visit the museum there, and I was not allowed to visit. I had to make an appointment with Mr. Rose. They explained to me that I had to go behind the teller line in order to get up there. So I would imagine that there have been no visitors to the museum since it's been up there whatsoever.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, and I thank you again.
Next speaker, please. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Silbiger and members of the city council. My name is Kathy Zermino, and I am the president of the Culver City Historical Society. I am also the founding president in 1980. I am here to ask you to please consider our request to help us obtain a Culver City museum. Over 26 years ago, the Historical Society was founded because there was a need to preserve our rich history. Our history goes back to the Gabrielino Indians, the Spanish land grant, Mr. Harry Culver, and of course, the motion picture industry. We are very proud to have on our city seal the heart of Screenland. We need a place that we can display our collections so that we can share the history of our city with everyone. Our schools are now learning about our history. When my children went to Culver City schools, they learned about the California history and very little about Culver City. Thanks to Julie Sarah, Julie Lugo-Sara, I'm sorry, and her committee for starting the living history. This is in our schools, and I have to say that those students do a beautiful job of the program. We receive many inquiries from New York requesting information. Some we can answer, others we require research, and we cannot get to our sources. We need to be able to share our rich history and our records for future history so that it will be remembered. We have in our archives about the past elected officials, the city council, and Board of Education. We need to preserve these things because it is so easy to forget in time. I know that I, if you ask me who was on the council 20 years ago, I cannot give you the names off the top of my head. So these are things that are forgotten; they need to be recorded. We thank our membership that have been collecting and preserving a lot of our history and are sharing information with us. I am asking you to please consider a partnership with the Culver City Historical Society so that we may have the Culver City Historical Museum. I also would like to tell you that the city owns a little over 70 costumes, MGM costumes. I had taken care of them since 1978. Sid Cronenthal asked me to take care of them. They were beautiful. We had a gorgeous show when we became the Historical Society.
You can finish up.
Those costumes are being stored in a very, very bad place, okay? At the tower, at Vets Building. Fabrics need to be put into a temperature-controlled environment, or they will disintegrate. Now, those costumes, I've packaged them two times over the years with acid-free paper and boxes. I had a committee. And then, I don't know if you remember, but 21 costumes were stolen from the E.V. Roberts Building, where the city had them stored. We did not have them stored there. The city stored them. So anyway, they were robbed, and the police put out a call, and they recovered 20. The most important one was not recovered, which was Lucille Ball's dress from the long, long trailer. It was in pretty bad shape, but it was her costume, her dress. Anyway, those costumes do need to be in a better environment. The Historical Society has offered over and over to repackage them and take care of them for the city. We know they belong to the city, but we would be caretakers, which we offer to do. You need a place that is temperature, more or less temperature, better than the tower. They're way up at the top of the tower. So we would also be taking care of the costumes down in what we would consider our museum. I hope you will see it in your vision that you would allow us to have a museum in Culver City. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Susan Dean, and I've lived here a very long time. Probably longer than Mr. Rose. I'm a life member of the Historical Society. I currently have the honor of serving as the chair of the Cultural Affairs Commission, and I am a vice president of the Historical Society. Tonight, I am speaking as an individual. What most people did not know before the speaker started this evening is that the Historical Society has a vast collection. In addition to an extensive collection of artifacts and memorabilia, it has a huge collection of old newspapers and photos. These collections, in a proper location that people can actually get to, could become a very valuable resource about local history for students of all ages. The overflow room is a totally underutilized space that needs some TLC. The Historical Society has the resources and the dedication to make this space into a viable museum and workspace accessible to all the public. This is a fabulous opportunity to make the history of Culver City and its surrounds available to everyone. I see this as a win-win situation. Nearly three years ago, the council adopted the community cultural plan. A very large component of that plan is historical preservation. This agenda item speaks directly to that part of the community cultural plan. I hope you will give this very serious consideration and will approve this agenda item. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Julie Lugo-Sara, and Sam Sarah would like to give his time to Julie Lugo-Sara.
Mr. Mayor, I say we appreciate having Sam Sarah with us tonight.
It's the first time I've seen him here. He's not running down the aisle.
Big effort.
I know.
Yeah. It's only one minute over. It's four minutes total, if that's okay.
Four minutes is fine. I was going to give you more, but four minutes, if that's all you need.
No, I think I can do it in four minutes.
May, may, may I just say and just disagree with Mr. Rose?
One of the minutes is Sam's, and three is...
On second thought, maybe you should recuse yourself. Goodbye.
You, you might appreciate having Sam Sarah here, but some, sometimes when he gets mad, I don't, I have no idea.
Yeah. It's an Italian trait. Mayor Silbiger and members of our city council, I am Julie Lugo-Sara, 61-year resident of Culver City and the government liaison for the Culver City Historical Society. It has been 10 years this month that the council appointed me city historian, and I think that signifies the importance of city history to our community. I receive a lot of questions, speak to groups and bunches, write bunches, and I have furnished more than 100 pages of history for the city website, noticed and referred to by many, including Senator Barbara Boxer. The Cultural Affairs Commission was established this century, folding historic preservation with art in public places, another validation of the importance of history. The council adopted a cultural plan that includes a museum, a high priority, with locals who participated in the process. At no cost to the city, the Culver City Historical Society, a 501(c)(3), has been preserving the history of the city for 26 years. We have amassed quite a collection, offer walking and bus tours, lectures, special events and displays, run a living history program in the schools, act as a resource. We are ready to mark historic site number 11, Camp Latham, that's on Sam's list. It was a Union Civil War camp, kids. November 12th, put it on your calendar. And we put out a very professional newsletter, thanks to Judy Stangler, but we want to do even more for the community. I brought a 1938 article, which Bill Lepointe has or may have distributed already, on the proposed movie museum to be located on the park the city bought as Exposition Park in 1938, and now called Vets. In 1950, the Rotunda Room in the Veterans Memorial Auditorium is listed as museum on the building plans, which you can find on the reference rack in the engineering department. That's courtesy of Sam, of course. In citizen newspapers, a 1950 article promises the $500,000 Veterans Memorial Building to be dedicated in October, a recreation building with a stage, restaurant, film museum, playroom, and large gymnasium. Let's broaden the scope of the long-promised museum. We can showcase the rich history of the city from Native American times, which of course would include a great hook, the movie studios in the heart of Screenland. Precedents, you ask? Our space in the E.V. Roberts Building, before it was demolished. Have you been to the Centinela Adobe? The Historical Society of Centinela Valley utilizes the city-owned buildings and grounds to preserve their local history, and it is maintained by the city of Inglewood. Culver City leases the Kirk Douglas Theater to Center Theater Group, a 501(c)(3) for a dollar a year. Culver City pays a dollar a year for the Ivy. Culver City pays a dollar a year to the county for the former courthouse, and collects a dollar a year from the Clayton Foundation. And the city pays the county a dollar a year for the former Assessor's Building and collects a dollar a year from L.A. Gold, a nonprofit. The VFW, the Armory also go for a dollar a year, as does the Culver City Boneyard. The 60-plus MGM costumes accepted by the city in 1970 may be worn, many worn by noted stars, are stored in a city stairwell. With the new proposed space, society would have resources to hold them, and professionals in our membership, like Louise Coffey Webb and Pat Bumpus, who can attend to them. 20 some were stolen, with most returned, but we would offer a secure space at our cost. The city's Greg Woodcarvings were stored until recently, and the CCRA had paid thousands of dollars in storage fees. We could catalog and store those for us all. Records, we are here to help you by cataloging and saving hard copies. We rescued the banned copies of the Culver City News from early times. They are safe now, but not accessible. I am currently helping the police department with research on a police officer who died, we think, in the line of duty in 1923. We need access to records. The Star News again. The Historical Society will agree to utilize the city's space, the broader, and broaden the concept of the promised museums in the past. We have a rich history there as of the year, and the opportunities are boundless. We could broaden educational programs for our children. Field trips could visit the museum and have lunch in the park after. We would offer lectures and special exhibits, and this space is a perfect location, accessible to a ready workforce, RSVP, for example. There is parking, and it's on a bus route. Students could do their community service here, not to mention the cadre of volunteers of the society itself. We urge you to enter into this long-term agreement for the benefit of our city, and personally, I would love to see it happen under Kathy Zermino's watch. She was our founding president. That's all I have, and Kathy and I, and Robin Turner will be here. We signed the letter that came to the city. We'll be here to answer any questions you have. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Steve Newton, Culver City resident. It's kind of hard to go after hearing everybody from the Historical Society because they've covered the bases pretty good. I've lived here all my life, and very proud to work for the city for 23 years, especially under the Hardest Screenland banner. We started a car club, which is a historical society for the Model A Ford, and we named it Screenland Days of Culver City. It's getting pretty well-known in the last two years, clear to Massachusetts to the convention. We carry our banner with the Culver City name on it. And it is a little embarrassing when we'll put a car in a show, say at the Heritage Building for Santa Monica, and we'll say, well, you know, I'm a member of the Culver City Historical Society. And everybody knows where Culver City is, but they don't know anything about where the Historical Society is. We had the pleasure at the picnic over at Carlson Park for the Historical Society's 25th anniversary, and had Thomas Sins's granddaughter and her husband, who's a retired sheriff for San Bernardino. And, you know, we took, and they were pretty well taken through the studios and saw what Thomas Sins had actually done in the town, and building the colonies across from the church at the old MGM. But it's still a factor of we didn't really have a place to show them a Historical Society with things that we've collected and collected over the years. So basically, I didn't know until tonight that it was going to be at Vets Auditorium, but it seems like all pluses, and I think it's really a plus-plus for the community. So thank you.
Thank you. Next one.
Good evening, council. I'm Robin Turner, long-term resident now, nowadays. Just want to tell you, I am the current museum chair of a non-existent museum, and I'd like to have that changed. I'm also a life member of the Historical Society, and we have an exciting time right now. There's a lot coming out. I'm also an archaeologist. There's a lot happening in Culver City, and it can range from our wonderful project of Semantix, that I have found a wonderful trash pit that was from the country club. And what we, I know that sounds strange, but what it also has two fossil localities, one of them just like the tar pits, and the other one is a marine fossil locality that is basically has like bat rays, which is like a stingray, and ocean critters. What, what has happened is nowadays, since the laws have changed to give archaeologists the opportunity to find everything and give them to different museums, Semantix, for instance, has allowed us to have a deed of gift from our property out there and given it to the Historical Society. This is very unique. We are one of the only cities that doesn't have a building that has been a city building for Historical Society. We actually get items from our, from people all over. In fact, this one's from Morro Bay that I got tonight. We get items of Culver City's importance from people every month, and it comes in our P.O. box and everything else. This gives us a really good opportunity to allow people to come in and work with us in the, in the new museum area, as for young, old, teaching, different people of what I also wanted to tell you, besides what Semantix is doing and giving us our deed of gift, and the living history that Julie has, that we also not only have Camp Latham, but we have several Civil War sites here. One of our members, just a few weeks ago, was digging up in his yard and came up with a Civil War belt buckle and a button. Now, Culver City in the past would have just blown that off. What we do now is we, we can document that, the Historical Society can document that, put it into the record for the state and federal agencies, that we did, we do know what's happening here in Culver City, and we are there to protect it. What I'm asking is that you approve this tonight, and like the other speaker said before, we will take care of a lot of this opportunity. It actually is ADA accessible already, and it can be used for all the community, young and old, and for teaching and learning. And so I just wanted to ask also everybody who's here for this item, if they'd stand Thank you, and this should tell you. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other speakers?
I have 21 written comments on this item. I'm going to start reading them at this time. First card is from Neil and Toby Rubenstein. Mr. Mayor, as founding members, we urge the council to partner with the Historical Society in providing a museum. Our unique history, consisting of thousands of items, from the earliest Native American period to the present era, needs to be displayed for the benefit of everyone. Of particular interest to us are the photographs, awards, plaques, certificates, flags, and 11 boxes of books from Congressman Julian Dixon's district office collection Toby and I donated to the society years ago. Lester and Barbara Silverstein, we urge the approval of this long-term agreement with the Culver City Historical Society so that we can establish a museum with accessibility to all to be able to view Culver City history. Sol and Martha Segal, I urge the council members to partner with the CCHS to approve Action A2 for rental of the multipurpose room at the Veterans Memorial Building. Judy Stangler, as a 60-year resident of Culver City, I strongly urge the council to approve Action A2, approving long-term agreement with Culver City Historical Society for rental of the city. for rental of the multipurpose room of Veterans Memorial Building. Lynn Burrell, I'm glad that the council has the foresight to consider a site for a museum, and know that it will be a valuable asset to the city and community. George Zermino, other, other smaller cities have museums in the inland empire and locally. This is a valuable opportunity to share the historical treasures stored by the History, Historical Society. Missed opportunities to have a museum when the city has, when City Hall was designed and new senior center was designed. John Riordan, I approve, I approve for a long-term agreement with Culver City Historical Kevin Lackoff, the Veterans Memorial Multipurpose Room is ideally suited for the needs of the Culver City Historical Society, and the society is ideal, is an ideal use for the space. The city will benefit from the society's ability to catalog, store, and display the historical resources. The purpose of the society's largely benefit the city, and the council should concur with the city staff's recommendation to approve the agreement. Michelle Sarah Lackoff, I would like to strongly encourage the city council to vote to enter the lease with the Culver City Historical Society. I think that a museum would be a fantastic addition to the city, that would allow the residents access to a wonderful collection that the society has collected over the past twenty-five years. An opportunity like this is long overdue. Paul Jacobs, preserving our history is essential. I support the staff recommendation. Mary Gibson, the history of Culver City is in dire need of a permanent home. A long-term agreement for storage of valuable archives and costumes will ensure these items are available for future generations to enjoy. James Gibson, I favor the approval of Item A2. Jacqueline McCain, I approve of the long-term agreement with the Culver City Historical Society for its use of the, for the multipurpose room at Vet's Memorial Building. Charles McCain, I approve of the long-term agreement with the Culver City Historical Society for its use of the multipurpose room at the Vet's Memorial Building. Marty Nicholson, I support the staff's recommendation to use the room at the Veterans Memorial Building for the Culver City Historical Society. Stuart Freeman, I am for approval of this, of the, of the agreement between the Historical Society and, and the purposes landlord. It appears that they're in support of this item. And I will apologize if I've destroyed anybody's name or the content of what they've written. This is from Freddie Glacius, I support Item A2. This is from Israel Seltzer, approval of A2 promotes, promotes the overdue development of the historical record of this vibrant community. Louise Coffey-Webb, please, please support the society's endeavors to create a city museum. It's long overdue. It will work better as a joint effort, and the Vet's Memorial Building is a perfect Willie Parrish, long-term lease for the C.C. Historical Society. They're in support of that. Greta Dean, long-term lease for the Culver City Historical Society, also in support. I have no other cards.
Thank you. If anybody else wants to speak, please fill out a card and give it to Mr. Armenta. Hey, any discussion? Ms. Gross?
I'm happy to see this coming. I think it's long overdue. I've got one concern, and that is that as I listen to the description of the collection, it's pretty obvious to me that when it's really catalogued, organized, and displayed, there's not going to be enough room. But this is also, I've always thought it was a very attractive room, and it's nice to see it being used for such a good use. So I'm happy to see that coming. And one other thing that strikes me is that there can be some synergy if, in fact, there ends up being a different historical museum across the street in the old courthouse. And I could see that even in terms of research and so forth, there could be a synergy between the two entities. But I'd be happy to support and happy to make the motion whenever you're ready.
Ready right now. Is the motion?
Make the motion. For the staff report.
It's, shouldn't say multipurpose, it should say overflow, right?
So approve a long-term agreement with the Culver City Historical Society for rental of the multipurpose room at the Veterans Memorial Building.
The overflow room.
Pardon me?
The overflow room. Not the multipurpose room, the overflow room.
Is there a second?
Is there a second?
Mr. Corland?
Okay, a couple things. If I remember correctly, the overflow room is the one with the fire pit, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. How much, how many times in the last year has that been rented out?
It's been used for overflow twenty times in the last two-hundred-and-sixty-some days.
If the fire pit was not there, would it be a more rentable room?
It's been, our experience, that it's more the, the wall that is separate, is in the middle of the room that creates a problem for a regular meeting space. It has been, it, it leaves blind spots and separating room spaces.
Okay, so basically what you're saying is that the room itself, the basic layout of the room being in the corner of the building is problematic.
Yes, it is.
In order to rent it, when no matter what we did, we would do for it.
Correct.
Okay. I don't know who can answer this, but there are city-owned artifacts that are under the control of the Historical Society? Is that correct?
That is my understanding, yes.
Do you know of any other group within the city that has control of city-owned property without a direct agreement with the city? I know C-Cares has city-owned property, but it has an M.O.U. with the city. Is there any other group that we know of that has this? Again, I'm not going to get, go ahead, Steve, I'm sorry.
I don't, I don't believe that the city has control of any city-owned property, that, that the only thing that the city owns that is historical, that's in storage, are those costumes from MGM, and they're under the control of, of the city, that, that's not under the, the Historical Society.
Right, but what I heard, exactly what I heard from Kathy Zermino is that they repackaged it a number of times, so there was a part of time when the Historical Society did have direct control of those items.
That, that might have been ten, twenty, twenty years, years ago. They're, they're currently under the control of, of the city.
Here's what my suggestion is going to be, and I think it makes it easier, and it's probably better.
Here's a, here's a possible, good answer.
If I can clarify for you. Possible answer, thanks. Basically, what happened was Sid Cronenthal accepted the costumes on behalf of the city, and the city asked the Historical Society, and Kathy basically did it with a crew of people, box them and put them with acid-free paper. We did, they were to store them, however. We just did that as a service. And the greg sculptures were donated upon his death, and city staff went back to Colorado to pick them up, had them boxed, and brought them out here, to the city.
Well, here's what my suggestion is going to be. Certainly, I don't want to get into the argument of whether or not we should have a museum or not. I think it's definitely well overdue. I'm convinced, based on what I've heard from staff in the past couple of days and tonight, that the room that they're going to have in Veterans Audit, Veterans Auditorium is by itself underutilized at this time. However, to be quite frank, and again, I'm for the museum, there's nothing in what we're doing tonight that guarantees us a museum. And what I'd like to see is a M.O.U., Memorandum of Understanding, with the Historical Society, that will codify what our responsibilities are as a city, and what the Historical Society's responsibilities are, to both show, and show and document what they have. And I think that works in both of our favors. It works in their favor, because they have an absolute clear mandate of what they can and cannot do, much more so than what's in our documents tonight. And just like it was with, and again, I had a little bit to do when C-Cares came around, I'm more than willing to let staff do that, because I think other cities have done similar things, and I think it gives us clear direction of what responsibilities the city has, and what responsibilities the Historical Society would have. So I'm willing to, and it doesn't go with the motion tonight, what my suggestion would be, to approve the formation of a museum in that area of Vet's Auditorium, along with a Memorandum of Understanding with the Historical Society, codifying and specifying all the obligations involved. And that would be not just having a place to store the artifacts, actually showing it, who's going to do it. It also would protect those people who are working in the museum, if by chance something would happen, because they're covered under the city with an M.O.U., which they would not be if they didn't have it. So I think it works in their favor. I don't see any reason why not to have an M.O.U., and I think it makes the agreement a lot tighter. So that's what my suggestion is going to be.
Can I ask, for those who are most involved, I'm sure you've been thinking and talking a lot about the museum. What have you, what plans do you have so far? What have you, have you talked about and decided, and what are your goals?
Well, first of all, what it would allow us to do is take the items that we have now, and open it up for our members, mostly are retired. We're going to change that. But we'll take, we want our members to be able to have a place to come in, and do the cataloging and, and all that. But we also have programs, not only for the children, like Julie has for the living history, but add more so that we have more people to come in. Also, there happens to be sequel laws for the, for the state, for the environmental compliance with things, and we need a place to be able to, when we have a project such as Semantics, for, and for a company, for, for a contracting firm, to be able to donate as a deed of gift to somewhere. And right now, we don't have that. So this gives us the ability for teaching, for, for the kids, the seniors, anybody to come in, and it also supple, it takes care of the sequel law. But as far as what we need to do, we can get in at any time, and we're ready. So if you, if you will donate this to us, and we will take the, like the, what we were talking about before with the utilities and all that, we can become part of the city, but also you won't have to worry about it.
Okay, I would just like, which places? I would just like to add that we've gone over and taken a look at the room. None of us are architects. We have people ready to come over and take a look. What Mr. LaPointe said about the segmented room, and Mr. Corland said is absolutely the case, that in our case, it works for us, because what we need to do is separate storage space, workspace, from display space. And the rounded wall works great, and we can put a separation up, which would hide the workspace. And we would also allow, I mean, we could, we could probably agree to do something generally, but I would be very concerned about tying things up, because you have an ongoing, continuous change of what we have. So you never know what's going to come into our hands as far as donations. And so you don't want a mandate that there are certain things. I mean, don't tie it too tight, because we, we would like to do it seasonally, we would like to do a lot of different things. But it, you know, we also need to get a computer set up right away, and get this stuff over there. We're prepared to do that. And get moving, there are very advanced programs ready to go now, that we can do the cataloging and get things all together, and then we'll know what it, what it has.
And do you have, you have people who can do the cataloging, or?
Oh, we have so many volunteers. We have a gentleman who lives down two blocks away, who was the archivist for Los Californianos and the Associated Historical Society of Los Angeles County. We have Louise Coffey-Webb, who's in the audience, and who put a card in, and you might know her qualifications better than I do, but she teaches, she's a professor at Woodbury College, and she knows the costumes, she knows how to deal with the costumes. You need that kind of expertise. Don't ask me to sew, but this lady, she can do it. So we have a lot of different people, we have a lot of different areas of expertise that we would be calling on. It's kind of like the concept of, if you build it, they will come. And the problem now is that we're in a space that is not handicap accessible. We do not want to block people from that. We have had to move there. It was not something we wanted to do. It is thanks to Mr. Rose that we were able to get the space there, because it's secure. And that's one of the other things we have to do. We have to secure that space. We don't want you to lose any more costumes. We want to make sure everything is secure, and so we have to do that. Unfortunately, you may remember when Sid Cronenthal had his collection of scrapbooks in his own space downstairs? Only his staff had keys, am I right? Some people went in, and they ripped up his scrapbooks and took pictures out. They are missing. I mean, how sad. This man spent fifty years in the employ of the city and had these fabulous scrapbooks. We don't want that to happen. We want to prevent that. We want to save your history. We're not all going to be here forever, but we want to continue to get people excited about it, and move them in, and we, I get calls every week. I can't go to the grocery store and during the week without somebody asking me some question, because they're all very excited and interested.
Any thanks, Ms. Gross?
Yeah, I understand the issues Mr. Corland's raising, but I think they're going well beyond the scope of what we're here to talk about tonight. I think it would be better, and the example that comes to my mind is more like the dog park, where we designated the space, got things started, and then moved forward, creating the more detailed, broad-based M.O.U. in terms of how the group would relate, and the city would interact and would relate to one another. I would not want to delay this and hold it up until that is done. And I think as they get their architects in, begin to look at the space, that then there will be issues that will need to be addressed in that M.O.U. So I would stick with my motion of tonight, advocate that we go ahead and approve this, and then we can also direct staff to move forward with looking at the fuller relationship between the Historical Society and the city.
Mr. Rose? Then Mr. Malsen. Mr. Rose first.
First, first of all, let me just say that cataloging, whatever the city wishes to, to, to give us, and have a Memorandum of Understanding, like, like the costumes that are the ownership of the city, and they want us to hold them and display them, I, I think that's just good, good prudent, prudent business. The, the items which are owned and were donated to the Historical Society, we are going to be cataloging ourselves, and I, I think that that eventually will be a web-based, a thing that we'll be adding to, so that, that'll all be public information. Anytime an organization loaned something to another organization, I would have to say I think it's appropriate to have some, some sort of, sort of, sort of a agreement, and I think that, as Ms. Gross said, that that's something that we could follow, follow up, up, up with. Today, it's just a discussion, should, should the city go, go into an agreement with, with the Historical Society over a space? Now, now, now that I'm on the space issue, yes, myself and Robin Turner are the ones that can get into the space at the Bank, Bank of, of the West. that can get into the space at the Bank of the West. When the property was at West L.A. College, only one person had, had a, had had a key. You had to beg for that key, and you had to give the exact hour and minute that he could pick that key back up. Things really haven't changed. We moved from West L.A. College from a secure site. They were, they were doing some remodeling. They wanted us to move into a portable room with, what type of windows? Louvred windows that could be opened and closed from, from the outside. The, it was a child development center, so it only had children's bathrooms in there. And when you walked to the front door, what we had to make sure that we didn't step on were cartridge, cartridge shells from, from spent cartridges. We decided to move it from a site that was very secure, that the West L.A. College wanted to give it to us to an ins secure site, in our opinion, and move it back to the city of Culver, Culver City. When writing a letter and reading it in this room, I believe you need to bring out all of, 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 of the facts, because when you bring out part of the facts, it gives a false story. Having what we have in a secure room was the ultimate purpose of, of the entire tire move. Thank, thank, thank you very, very much, Mr. Mayor.
Sure. Mr. Malsen.
Excuse me. I wholeheartedly support the creation of a museum, and that does seem like a terrific spot for it, but I, I came to the same conclusion as the vice mayor, that essentially there has to be some relationship of oversight. It's city property, the city has its own goals, it wants to see the museum there. And I think essentially that having some kind of a memorandum of understanding that allows the city to have oversight of the design and other elements like that, the hours of operation, who has access to it, many, many sorts of different things before, essentially before the Historical Society spends a dollar. I don't believe that the city wound up spending any money on the dog park before there was a signed agreement with the Friends of the Dog Park, and I think it's more or less a similar kind of a situation. I'd like to understand from city staff what the, what the most sound way to proceed with these legal arrangements would be, offhand, not being an attorney. I look at entering into an agreement without that kind of understanding of what the party's responsibility is for as troubling. So my first inclination was to say, well, this doesn't, what's in the staff report isn't comfortable to me. We need a memorandum of understanding. Can you tell me whether you have the same impression, different impression, or some way to, to split the difference?
From the city attorney's perspective, I think that an MOU is probably a good idea, but I also agree that I don't think it's absolutely necessary to, there, you don't have an MOU in front of you tonight anyway to approve or deny or take action on it. It hasn't been agendized in that fashion. I think that it would be appropriate to support the agreement with direction of staff to come back, to work with the Historical Society and come up with a legal document to set forth the roles of the city and the role of the Historical Society of more in detail of the use of that space. And the, the lease agreement could reference that an MOU will be drafted at a later date. I think the protection the city has in the event that the Historical Society is, I think your concern is that they get into the space and then they aren't utilizing it the way that the city deems appropriate. There are termination provisions in the lease, and at any time the city council is not satisfied with the, the use of the space, they can terminate it without cause, and I believe that is sufficient protection in place. On the other hand, it also would be appropriate to, to bring it back on another night and discuss it. I think the council, it's a policy decision, can go either way.
The last thing I would want to see happen is to get into a situation where we would discuss terminating the lease. So what I want to do is do this right the first time. What would you, Mr. Ford?
Yes. Actually, I concur generally with, and what, with what is being stated. However, the concern which I would have is that there's a lot of positive energy going on right now, a lot of positive energy. It's taken us a long time to basically get to this point. I believe that the members of, of basically the Historicals and Society, they aren't going anywhere. I think that the community knows them all. They've been around quite some time, much, much longer than me. My feeling is that if we could move forward, at least moving forward with then the lease agreement, I feel very comfortable with that. And then let them come back and, and work with staff on then a MOU that would outline some of the, some of their plans, and then basically the museum and hours of service, that can come then a little bit later. And we can even say that they bring it within ninety days or then one-hundred-and-eighty days. But I do believe very strongly that we do need to then move forward with then the lease and then allow them to use all of this positive energy to then, with the community and members like of society can see progress is being made.
Well, I'm, I'm comfortable with the idea of moving forward with the lease agreement, but I'm not necessarily, I'm not comfortable with just saying move everything in right now without having some idea where is the storage area, how is it going to be separated, how are the displays going to be done, so on and so forth. There's an awful lot of work that's going to go into it, and I want to make sure it looks great.
All right. So it'll be Mr. Corland, Mr. Rose, Ms. Gross, that order.
Okay. I think we're talking about two different things. I'm, we already have a motion here before we had discussion, a lot of discussion, and I'm, I'm willing to okay the lease as long as we mandate that within, is ninety days an appropriate time to come back with a MOU? I mean, is that reasonable?
I think so. I think that ninety days is very reasonable.
The maker of the motion wants to agree that we can come back, agree to the lease tonight with the stipulation that within ninety days, they'll come back with something substantive for a memorandum of understanding, which I think will protect you and give you much more protection than this lease will. And in no way will slow down anything that you're doing at all. That's why I can't really figure out what's going on here. Getting an MOU isn't going to stop you from doing anything. All it's going to do is absolutely specify what you want to do, which I think is stronger than the lease agreement. So if you, maker of the motion wants to do that, I'll be more than happy to vote for it. But I'm, it was, an example was brought up for illustrative purposes about the dog park, but I don't know the exact, I don't remember the exact timetable, but I would be willing to wager that nobody who was a member of the Friends of the Culver City Dog Park were allowed access to that area until they had a signed MOU, a signed agreement with the city. I don't remember them setting foot on that to do anything until they had an agreement. So I don't remember the exact time, but it wouldn't make sense to allow them in without some kind of an agreement. And in this case, I think I'm okay giving you the lease agreement with this, as long as there's a stipulation that we absolutely come back with an MOU. And I don't really think the council, we, ultimately, I believe, have to vote on the MOU, but I think it can be completely staff-driven with the board members of the Historical Society. I don't think you need to get the council or anybody else involved. I think you can go just the way anyone else can. So if the maker of the motion wants to change it, stipulate within ninety days or some reasonable time period to come back with an MOU, you've got my vote.
Ms. Gross?
Well, you said Mr. Rose was not in the room.
Well, yeah, but I, I just want you to answer the, is that a friendly amendment?
As the maker of the motion, I had already agreed to the MOU concept, so all it is is adding a ninety-day envelope to it, so that's not a problem.
Okay. Ms. Rose?
I don't.
You don't want to say it? Ms. Gross?
Yeah, you know, I think this is important to go ahead. I think that maybe some more thought needs to be given to this MOU, because I think we've got two or three, if not five, different concepts of what would be in the MOU. Mr. Malsen's talking about the city dictating where the walls go and how this is an hours of operation, and I'm not sure that's what we want to do. So, but I would look to staff to work out what appears to be a reasonable MOU that addresses the needs that the city actually has. And then let's see what that looks like.
Well, the important thing is that there's, as you said, Mr. Ford, there's so much energy and so much movement that because of what you're doing, we're able to move forward on something that people have wanted for decades. When was it? Nineteen thirty-something? So we move slowly sometimes in Culver City, but we get it eventually, so we're, we're doing it. I do like, I do like the concept of having your, your thoughts, you know, together enough at the beginning so that we can share that and find out, you know, what kind of commonality we have, what you're planning on doing, and I think that's a very healthy thing to do. So I'd be also voting for that motion. Any other discussion?
Just to clarify, I was certainly not suggesting that the city designed the facility, but simply that we review it to make sure that it's a good use of the space that belongs to the city.
Ms. Rose?
Well, I, I believe that some, some part, part of that is going to, when, 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 when the plans are presented and the layout, it's going to need city building and safety approval and all, all the other steps. So I believe that those designs will automatically be, be approved. You know, that if, if the city believes that there are issues there, it'll be addressed during, during the, the routine of approval process.
Okay. So the motion is to approve a long-term agreement with the Culver City Historical Society for rental of the overflow room at the Veterans Memorial Building, and to have a memorandum of understanding within, is it ninety days? Okay. Ninety days from today? Anything else on the, on the motion? No? All in favor? Opposed?
Bye-bye.
Okay. Thank you, everybody, very much.
Thank you very much. But I, I wanted to offer a little bit of information about the costumes to you, because in our next newsletter, our MGM Costume Chairman is going to have a big write-up about the fabrics and things like that. Also, I have a huge notebook with big, big pictures that if anyone wants to see it, I'd be happy to show it to you.
Great. Thank you.